We have a public hearing now with regards to parking fees at the three parks located in the town of New Hartford. When we open up the public hearing, you'll have three minutes to make a comment. Let me just reiterate that this is not a debate session. It is a comment period, so you can make your comments, which the board will take into consideration when they decide to program this new law. At this time, we will have our town attorney, or Colley, just go over some of the summaries of the new law.
Hi, everyone. My name is Herb Colley. I'm the town attorney. The board is considering adopting a new local law which would implement parking fees at the Cheryl Brook Park, the Donovan Memorial Park, and the Washington Mills Athletic Park. Those fees, incidentally, all residents would be allowed use of the parks for free, and there would be no charge to any residents. Obviously, your tax dollars are going towards supporting these parks as they currently exist. A proposal is set forth, if everybody got a copy of the fee schedule, whereby non-residents would be charged either a daily or a seasonal fee for use of the park. We've reiterated our rates as they exist for the use of the pavilions, which we've always charged for the pavilions. We've also reiterated our fees for the dog park that we currently maintain. One thing, and it goes on to talk about the splash pad and field user fees and tournament fees. One thing I want to point out is Section H, which deals with fee modification. The town of New Hartford may and is hereby authorized to, by resolution of the town board and without formal amendment heretofore or further adoption of a local law or the need for a public hearing, establish, modify, or disband with the scheduled fees listed in this section. Last meeting, when we were talking about going forward with this, a couple of the council people had some very good questions as related to the implementation of this fee schedule and problems that they foresaw, and I think we talked about that this would be a learning process, and obviously, from time to time, there would probably have to be modifications. The reason this is done by a local law in a public hearing is because of the fact that it's amending a local law. However, if this local law is adopted thereafter, the board, by resolution, if they determine that the fee was too high or too low, could make changes as we go along. We're asking everyone, and we have a list of folks who have signed up, to please, when you stand up, just state your name and your address. We're certain that everyone is going to be courteous to everyone else. The board is here to listen to comments, and that's it. It isn't a question and answer or a dialogue. They're here to get your input, because these are the folks at the end, either today or at the next meeting or somewhere down the road, who are going to have to cast a vote, either to adopt this, or reject it, or to seek modifications of it. So, they want to hear your input so that they can make their decision. Thank you.
Okay, that being said, as our town attorney said, we do have a list here, which we will go by, for all the people that wanted to make their comments tonight, and we'll start off with Dave Corr.
My name's Dave Corr, and I live in White'sboro, 28th and New Hartford, and I'd like to express my opposition to local law, charging $5 for non-residents' parks in New Hartford Town Parks. I want to put it in perspective, as I brought a nickel. First, the town parks are great economic engines to the town and its economy, but not just New Hartford, but the whole area. All three parks have a proven track record as a great public access, just by the sheer numbers of using them. If there is a specific problem at a specific park, then we need to address that specifically. The athletic park was built with New York State Bond Act monies, including the disabled fishing access site that was built by trout unlimited volunteers, by self and family members included. Along with the Hartford Town employees, I've been advised that the D E C will not stock any areas where parking fees imposed. Accordingly, we will be unable to have a youth fishing purity that we've had there since the first opening of the park, and it will be canceled without the stocking. Forty-two, up to ninety kids will be disappointed. Why have a disabled fishing access site with no fish? What will happen when a disabled person shows up and is denied access to the parking fee? What happens under the ADA? Add in the parking that will take place on side streets with safety issues and kids running across Onida Street, Route 12. The vast number of kids and their relatives that come and go on an hourly basis at all the parks regularly throughout the year. How do you keep track of who is a resident, who is not, who is not paying? How many people do you need to hire and enforce this, and every hour they so, and all the rest of the kids are running all over the place? The cost of $40,000 plus the installation, the hopes of maybe getting $150,000 in fees, is my understanding. I believe that's a very optimistic number, and when you add in the associated dollar cost to the staff. I'm also very confident that the police have other things to do rather than the added traffic control and issuing parking tickets. Next, when the Whitesboro, Utica, Clinton, et cetera, start charging parking fees, stop and please consider the goodwill of the community. Let me conclude with going back to the nickel. If every taxpayer in New Hartford had a nickel to do the tax bill, he'd have well over $100,000. I'm willing to put in the first nickel. Very good call to town. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave.
Thanks, Dave.
Scott, excuse me, Scott Williams.
Scott Williams, 62 Pearl Street, New Hartford. I'm here representing New Hartford Little League, the president of the Hartford Little League, and I just wanted to say the board is against this proposal. We rent the fields from the town, as you know. We have multiple games there. I've had grandparents emailing me. They don't live in town. They won't be able to come watch their children play, or if they do, they'll have to pay. I've had several parents who are divorced, and one of the parents lives outside of New Hartford. They will also have to pay, and when these fees start to add up, it's almost the cost of a registration for Little League. We're struggling, as it is, to retain kids in New Hartford, with lacrosse and soccer being so popular, and I think if there's added financial burden to the families, that they will go elsewhere to play. Thank you.
Thanks, Scott.
Thanks, Scott.
Peter Franz.
I'm not going to speak at this time.
Okay, so we'll take your name off the list. Just cross it if you didn't speak. Bill Gerben.
Bill Gerben, Augur Gerben. I live on 36 Marjorie Avenue, New York City. I wear a lot of hats. I'm not a hat, I've got, because I only got three minutes, I'm not going to read the letter from the Federated Sportsman's Clubs, but I am their fish chairman and past president. They're against it, and basically, they're really, you know, they've been involved in all these fishing derbies, clinics, stocking the fish in there. D E C won't stock. They put a lot of money, it costs for those trout to put in there. They're against it. I got packets for all these, and you can see that letter. We have nineteen clubs. We have quite a few of them on the Sequoia Creek Basin. We have Sequoia Creek Fishing Game Club, Trout Unlimited, Mohawk Valley Chapter, Wind Dot Fishing Game Club, on the Artville, New York Sportsman's Association, and we also, another, we're not in the Federation, but the Central New York Youth Fishing Educators. We've got to get everything into, the Dr. John Upnote, who passed away, but he did a lot for youth and youth colleges from New Hartford to what he still is. So, I have a letter from them, so I want to cover some of those things quick. Also, I am a recreation therapist, certified presently, longer than anyone in Onida County, and two more months and it'll be twenty years, and I took a test for this. I have my degree in youth college. Recreation is very important, leisure, quality of life issues, and I've earned a lot of the money and everything. Let's talk about tax base and stores. Right in your town in New Hartford, we have Gander Mountain, we have Dick's Sporting Goods, we got Phillipses. They sell a lot of sportsmen. We spend a lot of money, awful lot of money, in the town of New Hartford and stuff, and we've spent in other spots in the county, too. So, that's important, too. So, we're paying our way. There's a lot of people want to go in and use that water. I have a disabled hand, I represent the disabled people in Onida County in this area. I only lost a half a finger. I can't tell you how tough it was in the beginning. That idea, that fishing deck came out of youth college in our third youth recreation association meetings, and we gave it to Trout Unlimited, and they fooled it. The people use, out of all the districts, only about six disabled fishing decks in Onida County. The very best one is in New Hartford, because you got the good bathrooms. You're set up, you got the tables on that pavilion at the right height that you can go out there, not necessarily catch a fish. How about here in the waterfall? We take, everyone in this room takes for granted stuff, and we can't, we can't charge the disabled. Please don't charge them. Many families don't have a lot of money. Maybe a lot of us, I can afford the five bucks, probably most of us in here can, but a lot of families can't. That fee's going to hurt. Family, quality of family leisure. What's really good about living in Hartford versus Utica? Quality of life. Quality of life in Southern County. So, you get people up there, granted, there's a few bad apples from all over, but the majority of people, this community, and we're proud, we just have this great heart, we do so much good here. So, I'm asking, we're all asking you to please don't put this through, this proposal, please don't put it through. I want to talk also, I can't talk to my agency, I might get in trouble, like they said, I'm a certified recreational therapist, a New York State Therapy and Recreation Association. All the nonprofits in this area, yeah, some of them live in New Hartford, so they would, they're either places are in New Hartford, some are not. They use that, whether that be with the elderly, whether that be with children, Housewood Shepherd, U C P, A R C, all your nursing homes. They use it. What's really nice is a lot of those people have to be on medications, who are very close to that, especially at Washington Mills, and I use recreation in general, as a rec therapist. Some people, you reach them with a soccer ball, which you've always played soccer at, at Washington Mills Athletic Park. You got your dog park up there, the people, they see the animals. You got your hiking trails as well. Maybe it's playing basketball in New Hartford, you guys, you always have good friends, or football. There's a lot of things. Fishing's another avenue. All these different things is quality leisure, and we need that. Some people are going to be shut down if we close this. Trout Unlimited, these people are so dedicated to people in there, these youth fishing educators. We've worked our butts off as volunteers. We do stuff you've probably seen in the papers. We're always doing stuff. We've used that, we've used your park up in Washington Mills for those clinics. And as fish chairman of Onida County Federation, I oversee Sequoia Creek, all those creeks for stocking. I always want to stop at the parks and put fish in. I don't want to, for the kids. They help, they help stock them, they see them swimming, they see them jumping, just like we all did when we were kids. Are we going to have to bribe them? Some will probably still swim, but let's not get to that point where they're not going to stock over there. Please. We pay, so anyways, I don't want to come across negative like Donald Trump, but I can't tell you my heart, how strong. I can't tell you how strong I feel about this stuff, because I work with kids, and I see kids. And if I can save one kid, and if them parks can save a kid, then maybe, just maybe, we all get somebody, a child turning into somebody very negative and doing something very terrible for a Hartford resident or somebody else in Onida County, one of our local police officers or E C Os or anything. So, these packets, I will turn them, pass them to you guys if you can.
Thanks, Phil.
Please, I've talked it off. Thank you for letting us talk, and here you go.
Good job.
Thanks, okay? Thanks, guys.
All right. Michael Barata.
Yes, my name's Michael Barata, 26th and New York Mills. I suppose covered most of the stuff, and I agree with, you know, against residents, you know, mostly about the kids, you know, access to fishing at Sequoia Creek, that kind of stuff. I'm just wondering, you know, with the town of Hartford, you know, we get a lot of taxes from retail, retailers and businesses and stuff, if you could, you know, get that money for some of those stores there. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Mike.
For the record, I just want to note that there have been eleven people who've signed up, and ten of which have indicated that they're opposed to this. Okay, thank you. Oh, I'm sorry, I got another list. All right, Mary Breslow.
Mary Breslow, 13 Harrigate Road in New Hartford, and I've been asked by a neighbor, Joel Seif, from 115 Harrigate Road, to read a statement on behalf of the Mohawk Valley Astronomical Society. I am not a member, but he could not be here tonight, and I'm here to do a neighborly thing. Members of the New Hartford Town Board, this statement is by Joel Seif. I am a resident of New Hartford and am a member and the current president of the Mohawk Valley Astronomical Society. I'm sorry that I cannot be at this meeting myself tonight. It is also the monthly meeting of our organization, and we are honoring a special member tonight. I thank Mary Breslow for presenting, on my behalf, this statement regarding the $5 parking fee. The Mohawk Valley Astronomical Society is a nonprofit 501(c)(3) organization, has been serving Central New York State's Mohawk Valley and the surrounding areas since 1989, going on twenty-seven years come June. The organization is dedicated to advancing the study, understanding, and appreciation of astronomy among the general public by providing free educational programs and events. For nearly twenty-seven years, the society has been hosting public stargazing observing at Cheryl Brook Park in New Hartford during the warm winter months, warm weather months, excuse me, there's no warm winter months here, May through September. Observing would begin at sundown and last until midnight. In the summertime, it does not get dark until 9:30 P.M. Even though the park is normally not open after sundown, we have special permission from the park to stay until midnight. We assemble at the tennis courts. Members bring and set up their own telescopes for the public to see through. Most of these members are not residents of New Hartford. Some are from Utica, Little Falls, Rome, Poland, Waterville. They come so that they can share their enthusiasm for astronomy with the public. Cheryl Brook Park is an easily accessible dark sky site that is centrally located. We attract people to our events from the regions just mentioned. In addition to hosting public stargazing, the organization has also in the past hosted special astronomical events for the public at Cheryl Brook Park, such as the transit of Venus, which occurred just before sundown on June 5, 2012. Members provided telescopes with special solar filters that allowed the public to safely view the planet Venus as it moved across the face of the sun. Over the years, the organization has hosted many fun and rewarding astronomical events for the public at Cheryl Brook Park without any incident or problem. We have gained many members from these public events. We look forward to hosting future events at Cheryl Brook Park. However, the organization will have a hard decision to make regarding continuing to have these events in New Hartford if the $5 parking fee is passed. Most likely, our members who are not New Hartford residents will not want to participate, and we will probably not get a good turnout from the public. Please, decide not to pass the $5 parking fee. Thank you, Joel Seif. President.
Lindsay Rosenfeld.
Hi, I'm Lindsay Rosenfeld. I'm a Whitesboro resident, but I grew up in New Hartford. I'm a third generation who grew up in New Hartford, and I've always been very proud to call this area my home. I, like I mentioned, I don't live in New Hartford. My family, we just relocated back to the Whitesboro area, and I support local New Hartford businesses. I send my children here to a preschool here in New Hartford. It's a wonderful program. I'm very proud to be able to send them there. When they are attending these schools, they are meeting friends. We're meeting up at the parks that are free of charge with other families, either preschool parties or play dates for my children, and that is something having a fee would deter myself and other mothers that I have formed very close relationships with throughout the communities. It's a great place that we meet that doesn't charge. I am a stay-at-home mom, as I mentioned. We're a one-income family. We rely on having free access to parks and playgrounds for our children so that we can meet and form a really strong community. My grandparents lived here for most of their lives, and they worked very hard at making this a community that we could all be proud of, and I feel as though deterring young families from being able to go up to the parks when we live in an area that offers a lot, but it charges a lot as well. There aren't a lot of free activities, and being able to go up there really is important for our children. I know no one's answering questions tonight, but I also, you know, I would also like to bring up the fact that there's a lot of business owners that have businesses that are taxpayers, tens of thousands of dollars they pay into the New Hartford community. Are those people also going to be expected to pay $5 to participate in their child's T-ball, their grandchild's T-ball game, or go up to a preschool end-of-year party up at the Cheryl Brook Park? Would they have to pay that $5 to go up and enjoy those things? Thank you.
Don Han.
Hi, my name is Don Han. I've been a lifelong resident of the town of New Hartford until this week, when I closed on my house, and now reside in Whitesboro. I am the past president and current pollution chairman for the United Confederate Sportsman of Onida County, and I'm their delegate to the Sequoia Creek Intermunicipal, or Sequoia Creek Basin Intermunicipal Commission, and we have a, as stewards of the Sequoia Creek, a mutual interest in the health of the creek. We're constantly battling pollution in the creek, and such as all the runoff from all the pavement in New Hartford, from all the stores, and the PCBs in numerous sites in New Hartford. We're always poking the D E C with a stick to, you know, to keep up on those cleanups. And I, most importantly, I'm a grandparent. I have three grandchildren, and when I take them fishing, the best place is Washington Mills Park, and I have to stop and buy worms, and that costs me a few bucks, and, you know, the pain to get in there would be a deterrent. I would go somewhere else. Now, I have a question about, you don't have to answer it, but I would like your attorney to let us know as far as the ADA, and what is the law as far as denying access to anyone or handicapped people that that was paid for partially by, other than the town and the sportsmen? The same with, I was instrumental in helping to get the handicapped access site at Petrika Park in New York Mills, which is the town of New Hartford, and, you know, you can't deny us access or charges there because of the ADA, and I would imagine that stands for Washington Mills Park also. You know, there are things that are important to me, too, like the health of the stream. I've always been interested in that. Every year for the last twelve years, I've been the committee chairman and set up Sequoia Creek Spring Cleanup, where we have the municipalities of the basin, which is Casville, Clayville, Washington Mills, Chadwick's, New Hartford, New York Mills, Yorkville, Whitesboro, Whites Town, everybody on the stream, and everyone gets together and helps clean up litter every April, and there are times when Dave Corr and myself just do it alone. We spend all day cleaning garbage out of the creek. And being a sportsman my whole life, fishing Sequoia Creek from one end to the other, I feel slighted by being denied access to it there from my grandkids. There are no, there's quite a few places where it's quite dangerous to take children, and it's, I can understand. I would like to know if it would be feasible, it probably may not be, for you to put cameras in places to keep out what I've heard, the so-called, you know, riffraff. You know, there are people that go there and cause problems, but I don't want that held against me and my grandchildren. You know, Dave Corr, my granddaughter from Buffalo, the first time she ever fished in her life, she caught twelve trout, conventionally fishing with a spin cast with me, and then she asked Dave if she could fly fish. The first time she ever fly-fished in her life with Dave, on her first cast, she caught a trout. And, you know, I don't want you to deny the sportsmen the opportunity to hold our event. Every year, for decades, we've had events at the park, at other parks around here, and numerous. We, Bill Gerben, Dave, myself, Mike, and the sportsmen of Onida County, very involved in youth fishing and getting kids involved. In this day and age, it's important to put down your phones and your computers once in a while, and it's very difficult to get anybody to do that, and please don't deny us that opportunity.
Thank you. Thank you. Kathleen Jarrett.
I'm Kathleen.
Jarrett or Gerard?
Jared. I'm Kathleen Jarrett. I live on Snowden Hill in New Hartford, and the reason I came tonight is because I'm a new board of trustees of the New Hartford Public Library, and I'm also a member of the Seed and Weed Garden Club in New Hartford, and we maintain a beautiful garden in Cheryl Brook Park behind the offices and the bathrooms there, and we have members who do not belong to, who do not, are not residents of New Hartford, and I feel it would be tragic if our people who maintain this beautiful garden would have to pay $5 to go maintain that garden that everyone who goes to the park enjoys. I don't under, I feel like the quality of life in New Hartford is going down with everything that's going on, and I don't see paying $5 is fair for everybody. These are public places. We all pay taxes, and I think we have a right to be able to enjoy these places free of charge. If Mr. Tsitsiski can't balance the budget, he needs to get the money somewhere else instead of the parks. Thank you.
Linda Bennett.
Hi, I'm Linda Bennett. I live in Arlington Terrace. I'm also opposed to this law. Basically, I like to consider New Hartford as a very welcoming community, and I realize a lot of the people who use the parks, maybe from Utica, where they have, you know, not as much land to enjoy themselves or go out and play, and I just feel a fee would be, you know, very unfair to these people. And I'm also aware that we're going to have to pay someone to make sure everyone has permits, and with the amount that you'll have to pay someone is what we're going to actually earn, going to be worth taking away our, you know, perception as a, you know, caring, welcoming community. I'd also like to talk a bit about Seed and Weed Garden Club. I'm a member of that, and I would say close to half of our members are not town residents, and each member is responsible for spending an entire week to weed and water the gardens. So, they would mean someone would have to pay $35 if they were a town resident to, you know, maintain the garden that everyone's able to enjoy. So, I'm definitely opposed to it.
Thank you. Breimer Humphrey.
Yeah, Breimer Humphrey, Tibbetts Road in Hartford. I'm opposed to charging a fee. I doubt that the revenue would be realized compared to the cost of doing that. I see how the permits are going to be enforced. I haven't really seen anything on that. The only way I see is to have a gatekeeper at each park. That would be ten hours a day, times three, times at least $10 an hour, so that your revenue that you get isn't going to be what the estimate might have been. The other thing is, our parks are a jewel for New Hartford, and I don't think that we should tarnish that jewel by charging outsiders to participate with them. As someone else said, the youth need that recreation. They need to be in the open air. Too many of them are inside on their iPads and computers. Another thing is the cost to families that are visiting sports events, relatives. Another thing is the, the cost to, to families that are visiting sports events, relatives, grandparents and whatnot. And if there wasn't a toll collector at the park, what do they do when they arrive for a game on Saturday? Do they go to the town clerk? Is she going to be there to hand them a permit? Or Sunday? So it, it just doesn't sound feasible to me, and I think it's something that should be dropped.
Thank you. Sandra, is it Recidi?
Yes. Who do you think? My name is Sandra Recidi. I live on Sessions Row. And I would just like to say I am thoroughly embarrassed that anybody could come up with this kind of a backwards tax on those people that can probably least afford it. I myself can afford to pay five dollars if I want to go to any of those parks. I'm not expected to pay that fee when I use one of the parks in the city where they are also strapped for cash. These parks are public parks, made for everybody who may not have a large yard to play in, or lay on the grass and watch the clouds, or watch somebody else play sports, or go fishing, or any of the hundreds of other things you could do with these parks. If other areas have become jealous and use our parks, that's something to be proud of. We're doing it right. If we need to increase our tax base to cover this fee that, and I have not seen any information on, did we do a survey last year? Did we photograph license plates last year? How is it that we came up with this figure? I can say, we'll make two million dollars if we charge everybody one dollar when they come to the parks. Where is this information coming from? Where did you, how did you get these facts? I would like to see more of that.
I don't speak English.
But even if, even if we were going to make a good profit on this, this is not how we want to make a profit. And thank you.
Thank you. Mary O'Connor. Mary O'Connor?
I'm sorry.
Mary O'Connor?
No, I don't have any.
Carolyn Pendleton.
Hi. [laughing]. I'm Carolyn Pendleton. I live on Bowling Road. Probably, I don't have lots, well, I have a lot to say about it, but I have more questions than anything. First off, parks are open from one hour to one hour. Second, is someone going to be there in their little shack or whatever it's going to be to collect five dollars from all these people? Third, if Sequoia Creek is stocked, is it legal to charge for people to get into the creek to fish? That's all. And I think it's a great idea because you're going to pay people.
Daniel Bogdan.
Hi, I'm Dan Bogdan. I live on Washington Drive in New Hartford. All the comments that were opposed to this five-dollar fee, I agree with, so incorporate that. Ditto. I've got a, I've got another que, well, I've got some questions. Let me just read it. It says, "All non-residents will be required to pay a parking fee." Now, does that mean if someone's dropped off, do they got to pay a parking fee even though they don't have a car? I know that sounds ridiculous, but it's, you know, the way it's worded seems sort of unclear. Second question is, that I have is, I was around when they built the park, I think it was in the seventies, maybe it was the eighties, that was a while ago. And I remember federal dollars were used for the park. Now, do we, if we're going to be charging for use of the park, which this parking fee sort of implies, do we have to give this money back? I don't know, is that researched? Has that been looked into? Another question that I have, well, maybe a comment, an additional comment, is my daughter, who does not live in New Hartford anymore, she lives in Glen's Falls, it's when she comes over and visits, does she have to pay a fee for the park? She's a graduate of New Hartford. She was involved with the New Hartford Figure Skating Club, and she was an integral part of the community back then. So now she's going to be penalized if she wants to come over and take my grandchild to the park and enjoy it like I did with my children, my parents. I find that ridiculous. So I guess for some reason, I'm, I'm really opposed to that.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thanks.
All right, that's everybody on our list. Is there anybody else that would like to speak?
May I have fifteen seconds?
No, you can't.
Okay.
You're on the list?
Yeah.
I was originally on the list. My name's Peter Franz. My wife and I just moved to Mallory Road in October. One thing I, I'm opposed to the parking fee, I'll say that right now. One thing that no one's actually discussed here, as Mr. Colley has mentioned, that under section H, under the, on the page that he headed out, the town can actually go through and change the fee structure at any time without coming to any, I, I forget what it was called, some regulation or, no, no going through any formal amendments. So the town will actually, and the board could make that change at any time they want. They can increase that fee from five dollars to fifty dollars. There's nothing that anyone here can do anything about it because it's on the books. The board can do it. Of course, we can elect a different, you know, council person, but that doesn't help us immediately. And, yeah, Jim, I just met my new councilwoman, Jim. So that's, that's number one. So I'm really concerned about that, you know. Just on that, I think, I don't think that's a good idea, you know. The second thing is, I just heard someone say that she used to work or does work at the, the library. At what point in time do the fees stop? Maybe we should start charging the fee to go to the library.
Amen.
All right? I just, I came from Rome, I lived in Rome for thirty years. I've actually used the New Hartford Library. It's a wonderful place, but where does that fee stop? Maybe we should start charging at the library instead of the park.
The trail system.
Thank you.
All right, that's it. Motion to close the public hearing.
I'll move.
Motion made by Dave Second.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Thank you, folks, for coming. Okay, moving on.